Okay, welcome back, everybody. It's one o'clock on July 20th. We're gonna have a public hearing. It's an action item. B-1-20 Delwo setback variance.
We need to go back into Board of County.
Oh, that's right. We're gonna dismiss out of the EMS and go back into regular county commissioner meeting. So at this time, I will turn it over to Cindy. First staff report.
She has prepared a conflict of interest.
Oh, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. Gotta get my marbles lined up.
Okay, the staff support variance application, B-1-20 Delwo setback variance. The applicant is Daniel Delwo. The .30 acres is at best at 24 30 mile per road. He is filing due September 21st, located in the northwest corner of 619 Township 14 North range 3 east of the Boise Meridian Valley County Idaho. And Delwo is requesting a variance to relax building setbacks from the high water line of a small undocumented stream on the south side of the lot. We require 30 feet, 10 feet. If the variance is not granted, the applicant will be unable to construct the property due to the steep rate of property and the location of the stream within the property. The applicant is posing a 12 center square foot cabin. Currently, a driveway has been constructed and some excavations have been done. The applicant had a geotechnical report done by All West Testing and Engineering. The report concluded there was no major structure moving or sliding based on the slope, proximity to the stream and soil conditions, and therefore would attach to your review. Prop C is lot 21, is filed in the subdivision, reported a big book to page 26 on September 14th, 1959. The lot is .3 acres in size and the lot is served by Northland Works, which works through the water district. Captain applied for building permit and was excavating the site when inspection was performed and the unidentified unnamed stream was noticed. Findings, the planning and zoning commission held a properly known public hearing on June 11th, 2020. A motion to recommend approval of B-1-20 was approved on a 3-2 vote. The minutes were attached to your review. Three of those were posted in the statements on June 25th and July 2nd. Potentially affected agencies were notified on June 16th. Agents within 30 feet of the property line were notified by staff sheet sent in June 16th, and a site was posted on June 25th. The notice sheet, applications, group use staff report were posted on the website on June 30th. Agency comments received. Valley Soil and Water Conservation District has concerns due to the impact of driveway and building destruction. There are two perennial streams on the north and south side of this lot. Relaxing required setbacks do not provide a natural buffer disturbance concerning with the dirt pile. I have the Department of Air Quality provided general comments on air quality, wastewater, drinking water, surface water, hazardous waste and groundwater examination. Neighbor comments received. Eileen Skimmer responded by letter dated June 30th, July 13th with the following comments: She opposed the setback variance. The applicant has ruined the setting and naturally around the street is an isolated torn down drainage and redirected water channels. Has affected everybody in the neighborhood since water running across the river well drying up. Cindy Nichols, 24 33 mile per road spotted by email given July 13th with the following comments: This will cause harm to nature's conservation and her property rights. She lives next door and the excavation caused water to flow across her property. She will gain 40 feet equipped on this small lot, taking not harm 30 feet setbacks from each side. The fact that the side direction protection for the stream has caused the wildlife to leave. This was a natural wetland. He has already been given one variance and should not be allowed another. I listen to portions of the Valley County State here for your review. Most of the ones for setbacks from the high water line and ditches. It says all residential building shall not setback, shall be setback with 30 feet from high water lines and ditches. And that's one of the stream requests to be relaxed. With 9-4-3-2C. Staff comment: The setback from the high water line was not necessary to protect the stream but to make sure the soils were stable for construction and the destruction would not be in a crooked area. That was the reason for the geotechnical report. Setbacks from high water lines vary throughout different jurisdictions. The planning and zoning commission determined there is a hardship due to focal practice for raising and made a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for approval due to a low risk of damage to the structure from the stream. During the structure will not cost here the hardship and if not permitted, the site will be unbuildable. Recommended conditions of approval: One, shall move soil power away from the stream and two, structures should hold the snow on the roof and be a cold roof. Three, BNP's still census wattles, except for we've placed appropriately check water quality to keep. And I think the footprint was like 864 square feet, which might want to clarify that with him. So they were building up and in, not out, because it's a very small lot to speak in with. And then, since that staff report was continued, we received additional information. John Willie Haag, who is the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District telephone this line and said he was unable to make the Board of County Commissioners hearing. He did see a site with this. Delwo has done what soil history wanted and has met P and Z conditions of approval. The dirt pile was removed and the silt fences have been replaced. And then Mr. Delwo submitted those pictures to the county. And then there was a letter from a neighbor, Jason Anderson, July 14th. Just concerned with the impact of the quality of the water supplied and the mess of the ground of this lot. And that ends my staff report.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, there are any questions for staff?
It's like it's stating two different things. The applicant is stating that he didn't know these creeks were there. Valley County Soil and Water are saying that these are year-round streams. Has anybody done any work? I mean, are these year-round streams?
Yes, Valley Soil determined that they were year-round streams.
Okay.
When we went out to do, when the zoning department went out to do inspection, they noticed that the streams were there and there wasn't a 30-foot setback, because they weren't on the site. Finally, we knew that she had proved it. So because of the streams and we weren't sure if they were official unnamed streams or just groundwater, because it was that time of year, we had, I asked them to do the geotechnical report to make sure that it was stable.
And do we know how far that building footprint is gonna be from both those streams?
He's asked for a tentative setback.
On both sides?
You can clarify this.
I will do that.
Okay, any more questions for Cindy?
Nope.
So the way this works, Mr. Delwo, is we take testimony of proponents and then testimony of uncommitted and then testimony of those opposed, and then you're allowed to rebut any of those questions. So at this time, you wanna come up and state your name and the town you live in for the record, to the mic, please, and we'll get into testimony of proponents.
Okay, my name's Daniel Delwo. I live in Boise, Idaho. I own property here in question. Been working on this project now for about five years. Took me several years to save money to buy the land. Right now, I work a full-time job, a part-time job, in order to save money to actually build the home. During the course of this project, when I bought the property, those streams weren't on any maps, and so it was difficult to know that they were there, because I bought the property right in the wintertime and it was all covered with snow. You couldn't see those streams. So, and I just assumed that because it was in a subdivision, that they would allow you to build. And I have been paying my sewer bills to each property that I own, assuming that I'd be able to use it as a sewer at some point, be able to hook up and use that sewer system. So, fast forward, we got the plans approved, attempted to start building, got a stop work order. So then, you then in turn got a geotechnical study that showed that it would be a stable structure. And then, in order to get the variance, we've run into some roadblocks, some concerns from the Soil and Water District. And so, as Cindy was saying, there was a dirt pile that was close to one of the streams, had the excavator come in and move that. We then put in silt fencing according to US Forest Service standards. On both sides, we, you can imagine this, the west goes up the slope, and so we put it on the southern side, the northern side, and then we wrapped the silt fencing all the way around, so the entire disturbance area is enclosed in silt fence. On a side note, I've been a kayaker for 25 years, and I paddled in the Payette for 20 years, and that stream flows into Cascade Lake and eventually flows into the Payettes. And when I go to the property, I drink from that stream. And on Saturday, I drank from that stream, and I wanna continue to drink from that stream for several years to come. So I feel like I have a very vested interest in keeping that stream clean, and I understand that people have concerns about that, and I'm definitely willing to comply with whatever they would like me to do in order to keep that stream clean. And also, I just wanna say that I'll be cognizant during the building process that we keep that stream clean and keep sediment from getting in that stream. Another concern was brought up by my neighbors, because they apparently don't like it that I had cleared some of the land, and, which I can understand that. They wanna keep their buffer. I'd talked with them at some point on their porch. This was a year, two years ago, and they sort of iterated to me that they would prefer to have a buffer between their house and another house. I said, yeah, I understand that, but I purchased the property, I wanna build on it. And so, I do, I do wanna address their concerns genuinely, but sometimes I have questions whether those concerns are really motivated by protecting the environment, or they're motivated by protecting the buffer to their own home. So, but, in response to those concerns, she mentioned something about black pipes, which I was like, what is she, what is she talking about? And as we went up there and put the silt fencing in, we found a lot of trash old black pipe that people have been using to collect water from those streams. So we cleaned those black pipes up. And also, I applied for a water right, so that we could have a right to collect, have a right to collect water from that stream. And I've got no problem letting people downstream, you know, use my intake to have water. I'm fine with that. The other thing we did is, I kinda wandered around the property, and I was like, what would make Eileen happy? And there happened to be an old trailer that was sitting there, and so I moved it around the back of my Connex container, because it's an unsightly old trailer, I understand that. And then, the other thing concerned that Eileen had is she didn't like it that I was taking down trees. I understand that, I wanna keep trees, but the trees in question that came down were what you would consider subalpine trees. It wasn't as if they were 200-year-old ponderosas and dug fur. So subalpine trees, you can't even make 2x4s out of them. If a forest fire comes through, they go up like torches. And so, yes, I did remove some of those trees, but that was the only place I can build, so I had to remove some of those trees. And it's, I guess it pains me to hear someone say, he ruined that property, when I put a lot of time and effort and money into trying to make it nice. And so, and I plan to do that in the future. So if they would just allow me to do it, that property would be nice. And I want it to be nice. And I want it to be nice more than Eileen wants it to be nice. And also, like I said, I do wanna protect that water source. I wanna drink from that water source. And like I said, I drank from it on Saturday. And also, I wanna paddle in that same water source 20 miles downstream in the north fork of the Payette. I've been doing it for 20 years, and I wanna do it for 20 more. So, I have a vested interest in this place. And I, and like I said, I feel I want it to be nicer than anybody wants it to be nice. Eileen, Cindy, the other neighbor, and also, there is, there is other neighbors in that subdivision that are in support of it. And Eric, for one, owns three properties and he's in support of it. And so, and there's a couple other folks that are in support of it, but they wanted to stay neutral. They didn't want to put their hat in the ring anyplace, because they didn't wanna raise the ire of any of the other neighbors. And I said, that's fine. You don't have to say anything. But I wanted to make it known that there are other people that I've been in contact with that are in support of it, not just me. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm absolutely willing to answer any questions, and I'm also willing to comply with anything that you want me to comply with. It sounds like some of the things that we're gonna do is, A, we're gonna maintain these, the silt fencing and put wattles in if necessary. The other thing that we're gonna do is have a cold roof on, on the roof, so that the snow comes off slowly, so there wouldn't be a chance for the snow to all slide and plug a stream. And then, so, but, other than that, do you have any questions for me about what I'm doing or what I plan to do?
Still, I see it's 3/10 of an acre. Is that the size of the lot?
Yes, it's a 1/3 of an acre.
So how big is the house that you're planning?
It's a footprint of 800 square feet. So it's 24 by 36, I believe, or 34. So it's not a very extravagant home. It's an A-frame, an A-frame style, sort of like a mountain, like a mountain house, like a cabin.
So you came in earlier and got a variance on the stream on the one side?
So, so planning and zoning passed a variance, and we had a, and I, I guess I don't know the answer to that question. I thought they were giving me a variance to build in my particular location.
So was that part of the conditions of approval?
There have been other approvals.
So I think the one-
Some of the stuff I just read-
That's just one of the neighbors saying that, because-
Oh, so that did not have?
No.
No, I'm trying to, this is the same variance, I'm trying to get this one, it's just planning and zoning said, we're okay with it, let's let the commissioners deal with it.
Gotcha.
That was just the neighbor saying that.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Delwo?
So how close will you be to the streams on both sides?
We're gonna keep it at least 10 feet away. And so, like I said, that should be 10 feet from the eaves, so if anything, like I said, we're gonna do a cold roof, but if anything did slide off the eaves, it would still have a 10-foot buffer. And that's also, you know, that, that was the plan that was submitted to the geotechnical study at All West, and so then they, I said, well, that's the plan, is it okay? And they came back with, if you build in that spot with 10-foot buffers, should be good. So I said, okay.
Well, the neighbors need to understand that he would be at 7 and 1/2 feet without the creeks. They don't understand that, okay. How wide is this lot? I mean, 1/3 of an acre is a fairly good-sized lot, honestly, but it's because of the slope that it really chokes down, is that correct?
Well, I mean, it's, it's not that it's, the lot is, I don't know, maybe 100, 100 feet wide, but the stream, one of the streams is probably 30 or 40 feet into my property. And so then you go another 30 or 40 feet, and now you're 60 feet from that one side, and so you're just, you're just pinched.
So you're not really gonna be that close to your neighbors?
No.
These strings are in the middle of the lot, not on the edges?
Well, the stream is, the stream, the stream that's on my lot is, like I said, sort of in the middle of my lot, and then there's a stream that's just off my property on Eileen's lot, that, you know, that's, that's just, just to the north of my property. It's not on my property, but it's just to the north.
Hey, any more questions for Mr. Delwo?
Just curiously, about how much water was flowing in that stream this, like, spring?
So I, I took a-
4 feet wide, 8 feet wide?
No, not that big. It's, so if you, I assumed it to be about 15 to 20 gallons a minute, so it's like a stream about like this big. So if you take a 5-gallon bucket, what I did is I took a 5-gallon bucket and I stuck it under there and timed how fast it could, it would fill up, and I thought it was about 15 seconds.
Sounds scientific.
It was, it was my best guess. And so then I figured 15 seconds, 5 gallons, 20 gallons a minute, you know, and it might be a little less than that, I don't know. And it's, but it is, one thing I can say is that it's about, that's what it is even in the runoff. So, Kai, when I was back up here in the wintertime, it's actually, so it's not surface water, it's actually groundwater, it's a spring. And that's my opinion, and it's backed up by, I have a friend, acquaintance, that that's what he does, is water resources, and he's put in a bunch of water systems in Africa and stuff like that, and he says, this is groundwater, it's, it's not, or, excuse me, yeah, this is groundwater, it's not surface water. So, okay, cool. Well, that's good to know, thanks. But it's about the same size, no matter what time of the year it is, no matter what the runoff's doing. It's what it is. It's-
So your neighbors also complained that you have redirected the water channels and they were getting flooded? Is that a question?
That's not, so, I think the excavator, when he was doing some things, it clogged, it clogged one of the culverts, those streams poured into a ditch. And then there's culverts, and it clogged one of the culverts, and then that culvert got clogged and water poured over the road. He figured that out, he cleared the culvert, and it didn't flow over the road. So, I understand that, that might have been frustrating, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I wasn't there when that was happening, culvert got clogged, he unclogged it, it fixed itself immediately, so all I can say is I'm sorry about that, I wasn't there, and he was doing it.
Mr. Delwo, you said you filed for a water right on these, these streams? Did you get the water right?
I don't know, as a matter of fact, because they said, they had, I haven't gotten a, a notice on it or anything that I, either way. So I know that they gotta like print it in the paper for a couple weeks, so, but, there's no water rights in that area. Like, when I went to the, when I went to the water office, you know, they brought it up on the, on the screen, and I looked at my property, and there's no water rights, and there's other water rights in that subdivision, but there's no water rights on my property. And so I was like, okay, well, it looks like nobody's applied for a water right here and have that water, right? A, because, like I said, I wanna drink the water. And so, anyways, so I applied for it, and it doesn't sound like, from what they were telling me, it's like, shouldn't be a big deal, you did everything, you should be able to get your water right. It's great.
So you're not gonna drill a well, I take it?
I might drill a well, I mean, I can, what I was thinking was I would take in the water and I drink it now. And so then I was just gonna get it tested to make sure there was no heavy metals in it by like a state lab, and then I was just gonna drink the water.
But your goal is to use that as your main water source?
Sure, unless you tell me you don't want me to do that, and then I'll-
No, I just, just wanna be, make sure that you get the water right first before you go to all that expense.
Right.
Because there are a lot of people that have water rights on Cascade Lake, that feeds Cascade Lake, and they may have a say on that.
Okay.
So make sure you do your water right before you start spending a lot of money on the system. Okay?
I'll do it.
Any more questions for Mr. Delwo? Okay, sir, you can sit down. At this time, we're gonna move into those that are uncommitted. Is there anyone uncommitted? I think that the record show that no one showed up. At this time, I'll take testimony of those that are opposed. Is there anyone in the audience that is opposed? Does that the record show that no one appeared to oppose? I guess at this time, then, I will close the public hearing and we'll begin deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I did not receive any phone calls requesting the teleconference line to provide testimony via the teleconference line.
So what's your pleasure?
Really glad that you're trying to work with your neighbors to figure out what you could do to help mitigate their concerns. It's important that they try and do that. And I also understand that during construction, a site is torn out and it looks terrible. And so just make sure you clean up your site after.
But I think it's great, too, that you're getting on the central sewer, because otherwise this site would have never perked for a certain system, it would have been stuck with a camp lot, which is a whole different value.
Hey, I don't have much to add, you know, I just say maybe think about, you know, how can you improve that flow on the edge of your lot in the future? You know, maybe armor it up a little bit so that it doesn't overflow, would you ever take a runoff here or something like that? I, it sounds like a, you know, unfortunately, you've got a small lot with stream on it situation.
Well, it's kind of nice to have a stream. Especially at night when it's quiet and the sun's down and mosquitoes are out, you can listen to the water trickle while they chew on you.
You're making me sleepy, come on.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
A move that we approve, or, is this an approval or a denial of approval of the P and Z findings?
B-1-20.
I'll second that.
Move to second to approve the Delwo setback variance. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You go, sir, send Del.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good luck. How do you feel about skiers in your backyard?
I don't like them.
Oh, good. I didn't wanna ask you that before we voted on it.
Skier?
We ski right here.
Oh.
Charging $5 to the period as he's going through. Help pay the power bill or something. Thank you, sir, have a good day.
Thank you very much.
That weird little subdivision behind the neighbor store.
And we got five more minutes before we have another budget workshop. And are you here for something? What have we got?
Didn't get on the agenda, Marina, I apologize. We can get on the agenda for the 27th.
Oh, is this for that grant?
No, for grants, it's for legislature for the Valley County State District.
Oh.
That we did, I think, a lot of the commission, they calculate our match from the state fund.
How much time do we have? Do we have some more time? Or is it, are you out of time on that?
I couldn't do it next week, I guess.
No, people have to. If you can, if it's not too late, let's shoot for next week.
Do you want me to share what 2019, what it essentially was saying?
We can talk about it, but we can't do any kind of an action. Can we get it on the agenda?
And I need a copy to leave with me, but-
You can make a copy.
No, it's just-
Oh, that's just a printer, that's right. Maybe, yeah, then just bring it back into us when you get a chance.
That's all the districts, that's just kind of-
Can you make a copy of this, too? I'd love to.
Yeah.
I can email it to you. There was an email that came in that I did not see right now, on July 12th, no, excuse me, July 8th, requesting to get on the agenda. And I will forward this on to you.
So this is what we are required to submit by the commission for, that they calculate our funding from the state fund. And they are telling us that we can only do our budgets at 80% of what we received last two years.
So this is due August 16th, so you got plenty of time. So let's get it on the agenda for next week.
Marina's like, no. Get it done.
Get it on next week's agenda and we'll get it in.
So you have the letter and you have the letter.
Yes, ma'am. What I would ask in the future, if you don't mind including my chief deputy, because I get 75 emails a day, I do my best-
I appreciate your say.
To, yeah, if you can include my chief deputy when there's matters to get on the agenda, yeah, and I can forward her email. It's just a double set of eyes. If I miss it, she's usually catching that. So I apologize, there was an email requesting to get on the agenda July 8th, and it appears that you wanted on the agenda on the 13th, which did not get done. My apologies.
Okay. It's when I started early. Do you want a copy?
He's gonna email it to us.
Well, I don't think you have this.
Yeah, I think you can make copies for all of us. Yeah, that'd be awesome. But how come they, so they're cutting you back, would you say 8%?
Well, they have the holdback, the 5% precision, that's just what they're trying to apply to the state budget. And I think they're asking us to plan for that, and then once they get the C scan and later on, I guess for a year, then they'll be able to do these more.
Okay. Hopefully you get it all.
There's a new legislation that I've sent along to these guys, and we're out there really digging into it to see if there is some funding, for fully funding the Soil and Conservation Districts out of country, I think.
Why did you send that to us? Because I'm very-
That'll happen this year.
Because they've been supporting the Soil Conservation Districts for years, the state has more than anyone.
And that's why you're like, you're sport, and those things are like critical, just rigid, I'm about to tear them all. I'll make copies of both of these documents, neither one of you needs to worry.
Okay, let me just bring them back in, drop them by. We're gonna be working on a budget. Just a reason. Yes, ma'am.
And we'll be doing that.
If you ask them, yes, they will. Yeah.
Thanks, Marina. All right, at this time, the next item on our agenda is a budget workshop, and I feel like this is kind of an all-budget, so we brought the big guns in. She's sitting in the audience right now, gonna help us get through all this. Correct? And it, the latest one you sent for this meeting, is that the latest one?
Like 20 minutes ago.
So not the one that we have this morning?
No, I apologize, I'm gonna get this one.
Not at this point in time. The amount that we have budgeted for the contribution is $8,500. That's correct.
All right, Doug, or Gabby, whoever's, you want us down there? Anyone?
No, you guys can stay up there and review, uh, what you have. I'm also going to provide you with, um, some handed out documents. This is a levy worksheet that we have prepared, which kind of gives you a, um, I guess, an early synopsis and an early overview of what the potential levy rate will be, what our remaining cash will be for each fund. And we are again here to stand for any questions that you may or may not have. Uh, we're also letting you know there are a few items that have not been entered into the budget just yet. Uh, we're still waiting to determine what the final cost of the sheriff's office, computer software upgrade is going to be. There's going to be a portion of that expended this year with the remaining portion to be expended next year. Um, that, that's that three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar project. We did the shirt, do have the revenue collected for expenditure of that this year. The concern is, is if we make that entire expenditure, the project's not going to be completed.
So does that go into a trust fund then?
It would, it would just be accounted for as remaining cash. Yeah, yeah. Um, so right now, what we have before you that we're presenting to you is pretty as close to a final budget as we can get with a few additions that haven't been included that we're going to have to take into consideration. Another, uh, item that the commissioners are going to have to take into consideration is the revenue that we've collected, that we potentially might collect from PILT. We don't know if PILT's reauthorized for next year. We always like to have hope that it is, but there is no guarantee that payment in lieu of taxes is going to be reauthorized for next year. We have not projected that revenue with the spreadsheet that you currently have. What we've been doing in the past is projecting two hundred thousand, collecting that. And anything else is put into the PILT fund. That's why the county has the PILT fund with an excess, um, amount of two point six million dollars right now. And Commissioner Mopkin had some concerns with how that's being utilized for transparency purposes. We do have some thoughts of how we can, uh, expend that, put that in the budget. And then on the revenue side, account that as revenue that we would move money over from the PILT fund to fund those expenses.
So SRS got funded for two years, but PILT didn't.
Not to my understanding, there is no guarantee that PILT has been reauthorized. But we'll have to look at that legislation to see if SRS or if PILT was included with the SRS legislation.
Doug, you've got some notes on the side. It looks to me like they're not really funded yet. Are those some of the other issues? Like for example, when the clerk order need to review still, the grant writer salary, are you not firm on that?
No, commissioners, there's some questions if you guys wanted that position to be full-time or not. So the commissioners will have to make a determination if they in fact want the grant writer to be a full-time position, uh, full, funded at, at, at full-time.
Didn't we just talk about that a couple of weeks ago?
We did, but there was again, just some, I got the opinion that there was still some questions. If there was enough work, uh, and if there were additional duties that would be done, just the commissioners at some point in time are going to have to determine if that position will be funded at a full-time position or not.
She hasn't really pulled in too many grants yet, but she's.
There's a lot of applications out there, yeah.
Has she got any kind of administrative fees in yet?
No.
So this is a zero.
There would not be any revenue generated for the, the grant writer. No, I, I guess it wouldn't be reimbursed at this point in time, but there are grants I think that she was looking at to see if there were administrative fees attached to those grants.
I think the Abstein Bridge does have an admin fee on it, cause I asked her about that. The, the rest of that project is not, because we were trying to get the waterways or the water.
Cause that other company was standing out there.
The other companies stepped in and took it.
Well, we can't expect her to keep applying for grants part-time. I think we got to give her a one-year shot at full salary and see what she can do. My feeling.
Okay, that kind of clears up. Does that matter?
And that would be the forty-one thousand.
Correct.
Based on the kinds and levels chart, based on it run being ran through the point factor analysis, that's where it would fall.
The other.
Then I agree with that, but I think we do need to start getting maybe a monthly report or weekly, semi-weekly report of this, the grants that are out there. This is what I'm working on. So we're constantly engaged with that conversation.
She does come in with apartment heads every other week and gives us kind of an update.
I understand that, but it's easier to have it in an Excel spreadsheet where, you know, you've got something that we can actually look at and then we track it for the first year. It is a brand-new position. And I require that and other venues that I'm in, you know, that.
You're a visual person.
And well, especially when it comes to money, because we've flat said that she needs to support, you know, help support her position. And so she does need to be looking for things that, you know, do have some administrative fees, engage with it, so. I think it would be important for the first year to be able to look and see what she's on and, you know, how much volume there is, because it's, it's another one of those positions that, um, it's hard to quantify. And so she needs to prove that, that capacity. My feeling.
Well, and I think you can certainly go to her and say, I need an update on paper, where you at or what's going on? And request that at any time, so. I, I think we got to give her a shot at it. And so far, I think she's done pretty well. She's certainly trying hard.
Um, okay.
The next one down that I have is under Commissioners Budget for Awards. And I thought we did that through HR. No?
Well, there was a request for additional money to be added to the commissioners for, um, awarding individuals for hard work. So we did include that. Uh, that's included in the proposed budget at this point in time. Yes, each department gets twenty-five dollars per individual, but there was a request to have additional funding added to the commissioners' budget for awards.
And we have.
We haven't added it yet, but we were, we're putting a placeholder there, yeah.
So what are you thinking? Hundred bucks, five hundred bucks?
That would be for the commissioners to decide.
I had asked for five hundred to be included. Uh, the STAR program, I mean, if we, that was the copy cards. I provided the first two hundred fifty dollars worth myself.
Oh, you should get reimbursed for that.
No, I'm fine with, with doing that because I thought it was an important, you know, kickoff to see if it worked. But just a little thank you once in a while and a ten-dollar coffee card goes a long way towards your employees when you see something that happens that's good. And I think it's important that the commissioners identify those that, you know, spend some extra time.
Sure.
That worked on the budget plan was.
Let's stick five hundred in there, Doug. How about that?
We'll definitely make sure that that is, that's clear.
And the next one, thanks, Dorina. Is.
Put mine out on the email.
That was under Commissioners. Now I'm going to Buildings and Grounds. You've got a note here that says new position halftime. Is that, are we going to two and a half?
No, I, I think that's been resolved because we were going to, uh, make sure that we, in the solid waste budget, budgeted half of the salary for reimbursement.
Okay.
It was going to be technically, uh, the facility slash solid waste manager. So we made sure that we did in fact budget, uh, for half of the salary in solid waste. In the general fund revenue side, uh, we made sure that we accounted for that to be paid out of the solid waste budget.
So that goes away?
Yes.
Then the next one is under Buildings and Grounds. Janitorial, you bumped that from thirty, almost thirty-four thousand to sixty thousand. Are you seeing?
We don't know yet. The requests for bids are coming in to, uh, next Monday is when the bids need to be received. And if you guys recall, based on the specs that were put out, uh, the commissioners are asking for five days a week, which is an increase, uh, from the three days, as well as additional duties were included uh, in that invitation to bid, collecting of the trash, cleaning more often, uh, cleaning of more thorough cleaning. So for a placeholder at this point in time, just to have something, we did, uh, budget for sixty thousand. And, and we were trying to estimate based on the prior year's cost of what it was, based on the duties that they were performing, uh, was approximately thirty-seven thousand. We don't know what the invitations to bid are going to be. We'll, we'll, we'll need to firm that up after, uh, next Monday's meeting.
And we'll know kind of what those bids are coming in at, so we can readjust this figure if we need to.
We're going to have to.
Does this also include the annex cleaning?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I know that's quite a bid.
Yep, that, that includes both.
I need to sneak down to the Lake Fork Road Department once in a while, it sounds like.
Well, I think some of those buildings were included.
Oh, okay.
Um, in the invitation to bid. So we did increase that substantially just based on the recommendations or the, the invitation to bid uh, that the commissioners put out. And we have not received, uh, any bids yet. Hopefully we'll receive some before, uh, I think the deadline's this Friday for the Monday meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Doug, have we ever had them clean the county shops? I thought the counties guys cleaned their own.
No. We, we, we've never had them clean the road department.
Yeah. Okay, where do you want to go next?
Uh, so I just kind of want you to take a look. I don't think I, I don't know if this was emailed out to you. I apologize. It's the twenty-twenty Valley County L two worksheet. And it shows the maximum amount that the county can levy for, uh, which is seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. That's the three percent and new construction. Our new construction was ninety-two million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars times by last year's levy rate, which is point zero zero one five, seven zero five three five, which adds an additional one hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty-two dollars that the county could levy for.
Give me that levy rate again, will you, Doug?
Point zero zero one five, seven zero five three five. You times that by the new construction value in order to get, um, an additional amount that the county could potentially levy for.
And that was a hundred and forty-five what?
Hundred and forty-five thousand, eighty-two dollars.
Okay.
So the grand total, uh, that Valley County can levy for, the maximum amount is seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars.
That includes the hundred and forty-five thousand.
That's correct. What it does not include is the one point one million, sixty thousand, four hundred, five hundred and forty-nine dollars of forgone. If the commissioners, uh, choose to access the forgone amount, that seven million, five hundred and forty-four thousand does not include the forgone. Based on the budget that we currently have, um, the levy would be, the levy amount would be seven hundred and, seven million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and five cents. Um, that's seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight, ninety-five less than what you can levy for. With the understanding that there are a few things that we haven't budgeted for that we'll have to account for, as well as we have not accounted for the PILT revenue. So we have to take that into consideration as well.
So our levy rate then has actually gone down.
The amount that you, the commission, with our proposed budget right now, the amount to be levied is less than it was last year. Yes, sir. And I can explain to you why that is.
No, what I'm saying is, that to me is a big seller. That's a good PR thing. We're actually dropping the levy rate.
Yes. Yes, based on our.
We're trying to help folks through.
Based on our, uh, projected, our, our proposed budget right now, that's before you, yes, it's, uh, the levy amount is less than what it was last year. But a lot of that is due to the cash forward, the remaining cash, that cash that we projected.
So Doug, talk to me again about road and bridge.
Road and bridge is not levied for.
Okay, so tell me, because there is an expectation in the community that we're going to do some projects.
Yeah.
How much does it include in this budget for Jeff to get out and redo some roads?
It's going to, he's going to have to utilize approximately two million, ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars of his remaining cash to do that. All of the projects that he has presented to the commissioners during the budget workshops have been included in the budget. Uh, but in order to accomplish those projects, it's going to eat up a significant amount of the remaining cash.
And that three million, seven and other revenues?
That's other revenues to be collected.
And are we.
That's user fees and that, that's user fees and SRS.
And how comfortable are we that we're going to hit that level during COVID?
Very confident.
Very confident. So that would leave him then, um, in his budget, how much carryover if he were to?
If he was to expend all of that remaining cash, I haven't done those calculations, but we can do those calculations for you.
I thought there was like five or six million in.
There's seven million in right now. Okay, but he still has a few more months to expend money, right? All of the revenue, I believe, has been collected. We've received our SRS. We've received all of our user fees. We do not have any additional revenue coming in this, this fiscal year for the road department.
And with that, you think, or looking forward out to the first, or end of September, he's still going to have two million to carry over?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
And, but he already has seven.
Seven right now with, uh, I, I don't know what he has left in his. There's several different ways we look at trying to determine remaining cash, cash forward. One is just looking at what do they have left to expend in their budget? And if they expended all of that, this is one way to look at it, without any revenue coming in, what would the remaining cash be after that? And I can tell you that I think they only had, from my, uh, just recently looking, I think they only have like one point four budgeted for expenditures this year.
Doug, there was a question under data processing about the software for EMS. What's the plan there?
Well, that's the plan that I was just, uh, kind of touching on. We have not made any expenditures for that this year.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, uh, we haven't been invoiced for any of the work yet. There was a thought that we just pay it all out of this year's budget, just to, so we know that it's paid for. But the concern is, well, the work hasn't been done yet. Is that good business practice? So we're going to get a portion of it expended this year because there is going to be some work done this year, but we're also going to have to budget for the remaining amount in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We don't know what that is. We're working closely with the IT department. He's working closely with the company to give us a, a real specific breakdown of what the costs are going to be.
So Fairgrounds is actually a separate levy?
It is.
So if they have needs down there, then they need to let us know so that we can include this in their.
Correct. Uh, there's a, uh, there's a certain Idaho code that they can't go over. I think it's point zero zero six for the levy rate. But they are way under at point zero 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 six nine six four, so, yes.
You want to leave Homemaker at five thousand?
Well, based on.
Twenty-five hundred.
I mean, based, uh, based on what we're seeing in expenditures, based on the presentation that we received from, um, YCAP, I, I wouldn't recommend that we increase it at this point in time until we see that they're going to utilize that program more. But I, I would leave the decision up to the commissioners.
Well, in all honesty, Doug, I feel like if we're going to cut anything there, it'd be under contributions.
That is.
Twenty thousand is.
That's a conversation for the commissioners to have.
So on our buildings, knowing that we have, um, needs, you know, to improve the, the grounds themselves, looking at a capital improvement, where in the budget would we put in there to like paint the building? To repave this, I mean, to do some work on the other little buildings we have.
Commissioner Mopkin, I apologize for interrupting. We increased that, um, under Buildings and Grounds, um, Maintenance, uh, oh, one, ten, four, nine, four, I believe.
For the hundred thousand.
Correct.
For the hundred thousand.
And it used to be twenty?
Sixty.
Oh, and it went from sixty to a hundred?
Correct. Sixty-five, but that also includes the, the annex. So if the commissioners don't feel that that is enough, uh, that is an area that could be looked at.
I feel like when we have a brand-new facilities manager, he's going to be looking at, you know, all the projects that need to be done. And I know that they've given us their top items and there definitely is some things in there that, you know, we need to look at as far as planning for. So whether it's give him a year and get his feet underneath of him, so he knows exactly the high priorities. But I think there are some priorities with some. But I think there are some priorities with some painting and some other things that, you know, we need to make sure in there. And I know the Fairgrounds needs 10,000 in order to upgrade their electrical stuff. So I don't know if it's enough, I mean, honestly.
Right.
And so
Another 35,000.
Our levy rate is lower even by giving the employees their raises.
Yes.
Everything, okay.
And that's a 3%?
That's correct.
You know, this is really good news, you kind of made my week.
We have
Is that also including the benefits where we are still paying the 55%?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
60, 40.
Oh, 60, 40.
I thought we were going to go back to 50, 50 when we talked about it. Three years ago, it was 60, 40, and then it went to 55, 45, and then we were supposed to go 50, 50. You haven't made any changes?
It was discussed last year that this year we would consider changing. We had a spreadsheet last week.
Yeah, I wasn't here and I missed that conversation.
Yeah, so we went over it last week and showed all of your options. It's on your spreadsheet. But yeah, that hadn't been decided, so we didn't change it.
Is that in general fund? You left it at what, 55, 45 or 60?
60, 40.
So you guys raised it back up?
We've never changed it.
Oh, you just never changed it, okay.
Last year we decided the savings is 40,000, something like that, 45,000.
Correct.
So my concern and one of the things, you know, that immediately, uh, was addressed when I was put on here was
We're down at the bottom?
How are we going to plan on more road improvements? And I know we don't levy for them currently.
Correct.
How are we planning, you know, make change? Because if we don't get SRS, you know, what is our plan?
Commissioners are going to have to make a tough decision. Realistically, if you wanted to levy for road and bridge, you would have to determine